Welcome, everybody. It's good to see that we have the usual crowd. You just didn't cause enough turmoil, Congressman. Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the City of Calamasa, City Council. Monday, October 7th. This is now 6:01. Darlene, you want to call us? Give us a roll call, please.
Sure. Councilmember Cervantes.
Here.
Councilmember Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Molina.
Here.
Mayor Protim Hewitt.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
I'm here. Then we have City Manager Kobo, City Attorney replacing Mr. Burrow with Stephen Flowers, City Clerk Gertis, Finance Director Reed, Planning Director Lucia, Interim Public Works Director, sort of, City Engineer Thornton, Fire Chief O'Connell, and Sheriff Captain Northrup. You know one I've never really called on? Lucia, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
You never know.
I have all diligence to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we've got a presentation, which I feel greatly honored to do. I want you to pay special attention and write it up nicely, okay? Cap? Well, congratulations. Oh, thank you much. I can't believe you told us you don't want to do about that. But four million of this is going to County Line Road. Two million is going to Cherry Valley, and one million is going to the EOC. It's one way to go to build that. So it's, I can't tell you how much this will help us get started, especially on Cherry Valley. And it helps us finish the majority of County Line Road. And this is all from appropriations from our government. And this man right here, Ken Kober, who is, by the way, running for Congress. And so, but I hope the people of Calamasa will honor you with their votes. You got anything you want to say?
Sure, sure. I, well, first-
You like talking.
Oh, yeah, that's what I do for a living, I guess. Yeah, obviously, it's great to be here, but this is your taxpayer money, and so we're returning it to Calamasa. And I'm happy to work as your advocate. That's my job back in Washington, D.C. So we're working, obviously, on FY '25 now, and hopefully, we can get additional resources. Because my job is to work with you, the City Council, all council, and to make sure that we find out what your priorities are, especially when it has a federal nexus to it. You're on an interstate highway, obviously. And it's a busy interstate highway, I know. I just came in from Corona. It needs a couple more lanes, I think. So, and obviously, these on- and off-ramps help facilitate traffic and-
Can you put a good word in for us?
Yep, I am. That's why we got the money going here. So I want to, I want to thank you for the recognition, and we'll certainly continue to find a way to maximize what we can find for this community, because it's a growing community. You're going to need more resources, not less. And so, yeah, for all kinds of things that have a, mainly, transportation, flood control projects, you know, things that, obviously, law, federal law enforcement, but working with the local law enforcement, local fire, to make sure that we get the resources here. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Sure.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We love that. Where's the meeting? Grab the check. Grab the check, please. Yeah? Want to do it with, maybe that's the back row here?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for the money.
That makes sense, right there. All right, over now. Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. Thank you. Have a great interview.
Communications from the public, and we have none. None? Dead meat. Okay. Can I get a motion on approval of the agenda for the consent calendar and waiver for the full reading of ordinances?
I'll move to approve, approval of the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinances.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There are none, we'll move right along. Now comes the fun part. Sheriff Captain report. All good, I hope.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. So, we'll just go over the Part 1 crimes real quick. We've had two assaults in September, one burglary, five vehicle thefts, 10 regular thefts, and for a total of 18 Part 1 crimes, down from the 24 last month. Just a couple of quick things for the Sheriff's Department. We are starting a real crime, or a real-time crime center, and what that is, basically, it consists of three staff sitting in at dispatch in front of computer consoles. It's manned by a dispatcher, a crime analyst, and then a supervisor or an investigator, a swarm staff, if you will. And what they do is they monitor crimes in progress or other crimes that they might be able to use technology to develop leads while the deputy is dispatched to or is currently investigating the crime. The reason I bring it up is because recently, they've helped us with two cases. The first one was a traffic stop or a pet check where the deputy here in Calamasa had several people stopped. These folks had some warrants. One of the individuals wasn't identifying himself and/or was identifying himself with a fake ID card or fake name. And ultimately, the deputy was able to send a picture back to the real-time crime center of that individual. They were able to scour and use technology to potentially ID the person. They sent that information back to the deputy, and it turned out that that person had a felony warrant and subsequently arrested. So that was one good example. The other example we had was on October 2nd. The Tractor Supply had a theft of a utility trailer. And when that call was dispatched, or as it came in, the real-time crime center started looking at flock cameras, vigilant cameras, and other technology. And they actually located the truck driving away with the trailer. That truck turned out to be cold-plated. It was using a stolen plate to try to conceal identity. Ultimately, they started tracking back. They located several pictures, flock pictures, of the truck with different license plates. Our deputy came out, took initial report. All the information was immediately forwarded to the auto theft task force, and they started working it up, ultimately wrote a search warrant for a property in Beaumont and located five stolen vehicles. Unfortunately, they didn't locate the trailer. However, it's a successful case where we're using technology in real time to help develop leads and find bad guys. Any questions?
I'm amazed. You know, this looks like something out of TV.
Yeah. It's in the infancy stages. We hope to gain more help from the public or the private sector. We're looking at potentially, like Desert Hills Outlets, some other private entities sharing camera feeds with us. Additionally, some of our city, our contract cities have already started using their city cameras at parks and those type of things, so that the people that are staffing the real-time crime center can monitor those cameras and see if there's any activity that deputies need to be dispatched to. So it's really just overlapping technology and making sure that if we see something, we can dispatch deputies, or, you know, we can develop leads immediately and hopefully, you know, find apprehended suspects and get back trailers or other property.
That's fantastic. Any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Are any of the other past cities using this technology?
To my knowledge, no. So the idea behind it, or the concept behind it, is that as it grows and becomes successful, we hope that maybe some of our other cities can join in, whether it's be staffing or using their technology to integrate into the sheriff's technology. But ultimately, that's the idea, is that it develops into a countywide system that not only the Sheriff's Department, but local PDs can use.
We've already succeeded. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Any questions?
When did the trailer get stolen? Was it at night, or?
Yeah, it was a nighttime theft, yeah.
They have them all connected with a cable or something, huh?
Yeah, this was a utility trailer. I don't know the specifics about the theft. I do know it was at night, which helped kind of conceal the theft. And initially, when we got that plate, it was only a partial plate, so the analysts started looking at vehicle descriptions, and that's kind of how they put some of this case together.
Sure. Cookies, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just want to add, I just appreciate the information, the update, also, the, I don't think back since we got the August or the last report, so I just appreciate the monthly report that we just started putting out. So there's a lot of good information, I think, for the public. It's nice and concise, and it kind of keeps everybody in the loop as far as what you guys are doing and information that's, you know, relevant for the public and stuff they want to know about you guys out there. So I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Just so you know, Captain Northrop just provided the September report to me this afternoon, so I'll be providing that to the council probably tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fire chief.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I think I'm going to start off with an event we have planned Saturday. Fire Station 1 will be having an open house from 8 until 1. All the crews will be over there. We'll have the apparatus out, a couple of displays and tours of the station. I think they're going to flip some pancakes, so-
Here or over there?
Right next to us. I think they're going to do it in here. I think they're going to take advantage of the senior center, but between the two, they've got an auto extrication display and a couple of other things that they've got planned, again, from 8 until 1. And I'll provide the media with a copy of our flyer before I get off of the podium. Calls for service, total responses year to date, 1,497 calls, as opposed to last year at this time of 1,350 calls. It's an increase of 147 calls, or 10.8%. Staying true to statistics, historically, our medical aid calls and our miscellaneous public services account for almost 90% of our calls. 66% exactly for medical aids, 30% for miscellaneous calls or public assist, lift assists, off the floor, et cetera. Fire responses year to date, a total of 58 for 3.8% of our total call average. I know the mayor was interested, since we executed the auto aid agreement into UCAIPA, of what that looks like. Our auto aid mutual responses given year to date are a total of 138, or 9% of our total call average. And of 138 times, we were counseled 57 times. So our adjusted actual mutual aid responses are 5.4% of our total average for a total of 81 calls out of the city, out of the 1,497. Mutual aid received, here's the interesting thing, a total of 18 calls, or 1.2% is how often we need help in the city. It's a pretty good average, I think.
Yeah.
Our average response time is 6 minutes and 45 seconds. You know, we're working on that, trying to take a look at that, talking about it almost every day, taking a look back over the last months and since I was able to report. I know Councilmember Molina made it out to the fire camp out at Noble Creek and had a great tour. Like to inform council and the public that at the height of all of those incidents, you know, standing out in front of City Hall here, and you could see a header to the north, out to the west, and then to the south with three different significant fires going, we were able to commit a Type 1 structural engine to the line fire, which did a lot of work in the Running Springs area. Our water tender responded with two personnel and was committed to the Mill Creek area, Mountain Home Village, that area supporting efforts from Mountain Home Creek all the way up through Angeles Oaks. And then at one point, our brush engine went down to the airport fire and assisted with structured fence operations down in Lake Elsinore area. At one point, with, and we still had the city covered. We still had our Type 1 paramedic engine fully covered. Almost every member on the roster was either on duty or on apparatus deployed, and really proud of all the folks. They really stepped up when they needed to and put Calamasa on the map. I'm going to brag, there are other larger departments with a lot more resources that were not able to participate and help their neighbors like City of Calamasa firefighters did. And thank you for letting us have the opportunity to do that.
We are proud of what they've been doing, what they are doing.
Only other thing is, watch for the ladder truck. We're rotating it into service. We've got folks trained. It'll be on the road. We integrate that into our operations. And subsequent to your questions, that's the end of my report.
Any update on the line fire?
Just what I've read, coming off of the line fire from the federal incident management team, it's reduced down. There's still smoke, light smoke, and a lot of activity within the burn perimeters. As of yesterday, I believe San Bernardino County Fire Department withdrew from the unified command element, which tells me that things are backing off, that the threat to residential and commercial rooftops is lessened, and it's a timber problem for the United States Forest Service and Cal Fire watershed. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Business items? This is going to be taken care of by you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is to rescind two resolutions of necessity for a property at the 711 located at County Line Road and Third Street. As background, the owners of the property had proposed to redevelop the property, including relocating the convenience store and adding gas pumps. As part of the project, the applicant was going to dedicate the right-of-way needed to construct the roundabout improvements at County Line Road and Third. A planning commission public hearing was scheduled in May of 2021, but the applicant asked for the item to be continued, but has not returned with the item and has since abandoned the project. Around this time, the city was finalizing the grant and related plans for County Line Road project. 711 proposal was still an active proposal at the time that the plans for the County Line Road project were approved, so the city moved forward with the assumption that the right-of-way would be dedicated. Since the 711 proposal was subsequently abandoned, the city began the eminent domain process to acquire the necessary right-of-way for the County Line Road project whilst the city negotiated in good faith with 711. City Council approved the resolution of necessity for 1,068 square feet of property and also reciprocal easement for 3,183 square feet. This was done on December 18th, 2023. The city successfully acquired a 92-square-foot area that will accommodate the construction of the roundabout and the curb and gutter associated with the southwest quadrant. To construct the balance of the project, including the sidewalk and associated ramps, the city has been negotiating with 711 to acquire the rest of the right-of-way needed, and in exchange, the city offered additional property to accommodate a driveway approach to the west of the 711 property. However, these negotiations have been unsuccessful. With the need to move forward with the project and the potential cost of pursuing eminent domain, the city staff has recommended that we construct only the road, curb, and gutter portion of the roundabout. Since the city will not construct the sidewalk and ramps as part of this project, it is necessary to rescind the resolutions of necessity that were approved in December 2023. As such, the two resolutions before you tonight will complete this action. In the future, if the owner of the 711 wishes to redevelop their site, it will be necessary for them to complete the frontage improvements as a condition of approval. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
I can make a motion if there's no questions. City Attorney, do you need two motions, or do you do this in one?
You can do it in one if you'd like.
Okay. I'll move to adopt Resolution 2024-55, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Calamasa, California, rescinding Resolution 2023-75, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Calamasa declaring certain real property interests necessary for public purposes and authorizing the acquisition thereof in connection with the County Line Road Transportation Corridor project, permanent road easement on APN 410-030-041. And adopt Resolution 2024-56, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Calamasa, California, rescinding Resolution 2023-76, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Calamasa declaring certain real property interests necessary for public purposes and authorizing the acquisition thereof in connection with the County Line Road Transportation Corridor project, reciprocal access easement on APN 410-030-0492052.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor and councilmembers reporting.
Thank you, Mayor. I did not attend any regional meetings, so that'll conclude my report.
I just have a couple of things. I'm hopefully speaking loud enough. Excuse me. After our council meeting on the 23rd, we had our State of the City on the 26th, which was a great event at the plantation. I missed an RTA meeting because we attended, it was at the same time as our State of the City. Also, I had, I've had a couple of health issues, so I'm wearing a mask. Some emergency dentist, I'm all bandaged up, I mean bruised up. I didn't want people to think I went through rounds with anybody, so I'll be back to normal in a week or so. So I missed another RTA Budget and Finance Committee meeting, but it was, there was no, it was just a business routine. On the 4th of October, I was invited to attend a meeting at UCR with the president of SCE, Southern California Edison. His name is Steve Powell. He's the president and CEO. And he basically, they invited mostly electeds from Riverside County, and he basically did all the talking, had some question-and-answer opportunities. But he basically talked about Edison's, what Edison is doing, and they're all things that we've heard before. They're trying to, they're talking about battery storage and warehouses, the hydrogen expensive, the hydrogen expensive alternative. They're still looking at total electrification. They're saying that they're, they know that there have been increased costs to residents for their services, but they're saying it's below inflation costs. I didn't have numbers to compare, but I don't know. I don't know about that. They are also interested in getting everybody, of course, to stay with Edison. So they also passed out some flyers about UCR, which is great, but I got from our rep, Irene Flores, something that I was interested in, and I'll share it with the council. It's a map, it's actually a picture of, I'm sorry, I didn't even bring it. I did. Hold on one second. Thought it was organized here. Here it is. Okay. It's a picture, anatomy of the distribution pole. So you know, I see, I know, this is old news to you, Bill, but in town, they've been doing a lot of construction on the poles. I mean, they're busy, poles. So I thought this might be of interest to anybody who's interested in what everything is on the pole. So I'll make a copy and get it to the council. Maybe we could put it on our website, because it's good information. Anyway, I thought that was interesting.
Just don't call it a telephone pole.
Don't call it?
Don't call it a telephone pole.
Oh, they call it-
I don't know what they call it.
Oh, okay. It said they're calling it a telephone pole.
Power pole, power line?
Yeah, what do they call it?
It says right there, a distribution pole.
A distribution pole. I stand corrected. A distribution pole. Anyway, I thought it was interesting, I don't know if anybody else saw it. And that, oh, also, lastly, on October 4th, at Oak Valley Church, they, we were invited at a very short notice to a candidate forum, and so the mayor, Wendy, myself, and Eric attended. It was basically, it was UCAIPA and Calamasa candidates were invited to sit on the stage and take questions from the audience. We had one question for all four of us. The rest of the night was a UCAIPA night. And so the mayor of UCAIPA, Justin Bieber, was the only elected there, and the other four were candidates. They took all the questions, so we basically just sat there and were entertained. So anyway, it was, it was an opportunity to get our faces out there, and we took information for our candidacies, and I thought that was, it was worthwhile for us to attend. And that's all.
There was a total of three people from Calamasa there. So, and one of them was her husband.
What not to do on city council. That's what we learned.
Were you that any?
I did. I went to a WR cog meeting today. It was pretty uneventful, I would have to say. They did, we talked about an agreement they have with SoCal Gas doing the renewable energy and, you know, it's not going great, so they're going to reconsider it here next year. And then they did an IRIN, monthly activity update. You know, there was just a few, and then they actually talked about, they wanted to, they discussed Love Your Neighbor Program activities. And let's see, what else? Oh, they, there's quite a few, I don't, there's nobody in our city, but there's annual pace unclaimed hero refunds that are just sitting out there. So these, there's some in Hemet. I mean, there's a lot. So everybody needs to log on and find out if they have any money coming back, so I would hope. But none, nobody in our city, which happened last year, but none this year, so that's good. Let's see, the other thing they discussed was the meeting frequencies and practices, what we wanted it to look like. I did bring up the fact that they're always trying to push renewable energies and such, so why not, you know, have it so we can do some-
What not to do on city council. That's what we learned.
Were you good at anything?
I, I did. I went to a WR cog meeting today. It was pretty uneventful, I would have to say. They did, we talked about an agreement they have with SoCal Gas doing the renewable energy and, you know, it's not going great. So they're going to reconsider it here next year. And then they did an IRIN, monthly activity update. You know, there was just a few. And then they actually talked about, they wanted to, they discussed love your, the love your neighbor program activities. And let's see, what else? Oh, they, there's quite a few. I don't, there's nobody in our city, but there's annual pays unclaimed hero refunds that are just sitting out there. So these, there's some to hem it. I mean, there's a lot. So everybody needs to log on and find out if they have any money coming back. So I would hope, but none, nobody in our city, which happened last year, but none this year. So that's good. Let's see. The other thing they discussed was the meeting frequencies and practices, what we wanted it, wanted it to look like. I did bring up the fact that they're always trying to push renewable energies and such. So why not, you know, have it so we can do some online, online meetings? And I get it. It's nice to meet with people and see you face to face, but with the state coming down and saying, hey, we don't want you to drive that far to work and possibly fining us for it. I thought maybe we should take another look at how that's all going to look in the future and maybe form some area where we can log in and on a big screen here in the pass area possibly and do it that way instead of traveling out there. So that was really much, there wasn't a whole lot to talk about. The next meeting is November fourth and that's about it.
Yes, so we had a regional conservation authority meeting, RCA, today. And we closed on a property. It was announced in the back basin of Lake Elsinore, add more property to the fold there. But the main point of interest was we talked about a species that is not covered by the MSHCP, that it's making its way through the pipeline that could potentially be added to the endangered states endangered species list. And it is the Crotches Bumblebee. I know you're wondering about the name, but it is actually a name named after a British biologist, entomologist, George Crotch. But it's the, the bumblebee is being considered to be included on the endangered species list here in the state and that would affect the MSHCP because it is, it is native to our region. Well, it used to be native all the way up to the Bay Area, but it's, it's area has been shrinking so much so that it may, it may be endangered. And so it's making its way through the process. And so if it is indeed added, we will have to modify the MSHCP to include this species as part of the plan as well, which would mean further protections and so forth for this species. So be interesting to see what happens. But as of yet, still the final determination is yet to be determined by the end of the year. So that is that. And then finally, on Friday, this Friday, October eleventh, there's going to be a celebration, twenty year celebration of the MSHCP. For those of you who are interested, I'll be attending the Hidden Valley Nature Center in Riverside from nine thirty to eleven thirty. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Question for you, Captain. Other one. Batteries, what do you do with them? Huh? Yeah, how do you get rid of them? No, it's, I was just looking, there's, they've got a cleanup in Cali Mesa and Saturday. But one of the things you can't bring to them is batteries. I just wondered, what do you do with batteries?
They're the same time.
Yeah, I think we run that back through county environmental health. Marty probably knows better.
That's a different event. It's, it is being held at the same day and time, but it's at Mesa View Middle School. It's our community cleanup that we do twice a year. So there will be shredding, first time doing shredding, we'll do compost giveaway, e-waste drop off. They're not accepting batteries. We do take small household batteries here at city hall for CRNR to pick up. But if you do have batteries, you need to take that.
No, that's, I've been asked several times by householders like D's, things like that, that size battery.
Yep, we take them at city hall.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Oh, that'll make her happy. Thank you. I really have nothing prominent to say other than, you know, it's always fun to drive around here and see how fast you can go. At least trying to stay out of the way of the people that are really going fast. So not through the fault of our sheriff, it's just interesting how people, you know, I just, there by the church, I had somebody pass me again on the left, you know, and I was going forty. I still met him at the stop sign, so they weren't going that fast. It's always interesting. But yeah, we have a cleanup Saturday, October twelfth, at Mesa View Middle School. And they also have a shrutter there for anybody that wants to get rid of legal papers. That's about it. Do you want to say anything to say, Mr. City Manager?
I do have a couple of quick announcements. On the cleanup, I just want to point out, I think we've had a couple of comments on social media in regards to bulky item pickups and whether this is replacing CRNR's bulky item pickup. It is not. This is in addition to the normal bulky pickup. So people, their CRNR customers are, can do two bulky pickup items per year. They just contact CRNR like they normally do. So this is not replacing that. This is in addition to that. So I just want to make that clarification. I did want to get a, give a quick update on County Line Road. We are starting construction at Third Street and County Line Road for the roundabout. That'll be the last roundabout for the local partnership program grant. The one that, we got the four million dollars through Congressman Ken Calvert is slated for County Line Road and Cali Mesa Boulevard. That'll be a multi land roundabout at that, but that's a separate project. So that will be happening later on. But yes, so we are going, the intersection of Third and County Line Road will be closed for sixty-eight weeks. We are working with Borden Excavating and South Mesa Water District or Company, excuse me, on their, on their project to make sure that we're coordinating the best we can. We just have a lot of construction activity happening on County Line Road and making sure we're in constant communication, our teams with Ucaipa and South Mesa to make sure that we're all trying to coordinate the best we can on those projects. But all the businesses at that intersection will continue to be open. So please patronize them because it gets, it does get a little tough when there's construction. So we encourage people to go utilize those businesses at that intersection. And that will go, like I said, sixty-eight weeks. And lastly, on my, the podcast that I do every week, my plan for this week's episode that'll come out on Friday is to give another Oak Valley Town Center update. It's been a while since I gave that. So I just want to kind of let the, you know, there's not a lot to report on that, but I think that the public probably wants to know what we're doing on that front. And there's some things I can share with the public. So I will be recording that episode on Friday. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Well, I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or for Chief O'Connell. I know if you have sharps, you can only discard them in a special container. I know they accept them at the sheriff's station in Ucaipa. I'm not sure if we do. But do the batteries have to be in any kind of special container?
Marty can answer that question.
They can bring, so we only take small household batteries. They can come in anything. We put them in a special container here specifically for batteries and then CRNR will pick up that container from us once it's filled.
So we can bring them in a baggie?
You can bring them in a baggie, yes.
Thank you very much.
Can I mention one more thing? We do have Congressman Calvert, Ken Calvert, speaking here for the chamber breakfast. Will be here on Tuesday morning at seven thirty. So if anybody wants to get tickets, they will be serving breakfast here too. So you can get tickets through the chamber. Just wanted to let you know. Yeah, tomorrow's Tuesday. That's right.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the regular meeting of the city council on Monday, October twenty-first. And thank you all for coming to this overcrowded place.